Good evening. I call to order this Board of Commissioners meeting on April 1st. Good evening, everyone. We have our welcome opening video. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Anyone parking for this meeting or using the bus can pick up passes on their way out, and it will be valid for today only. Ethics reminder to the Board: In accordance with the Code of Ethics adopted by the Board, all county commissioners have a duty to obey all applicable laws regarding official actions, to uphold the integrity and independence of the office, to avoid impropriety in the exercise of official duties, to faithfully perform the duties of the office, and to conduct the affairs of the governing board in an open and public manner. Is there any item on the agenda, the outcome of which will have a direct, substantial, and readily identifiable financial impact for any Board member? Also, does any Board member have a financial interest in any public contract coming before this Board today? There being none, all Board members have a duty and obligation to vote. We'll move to our consent agenda. Commissioners, do you all have any questions? Does anyone from the public have questions or comments about the consent agenda? All right, there being none, do we have a motion to approve the agenda and consent agenda as presented?
So moved.
Commissioner Whiteside, second?
Second.
Commissioner Sloan, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, we will move forward. All right, we come to public comment. The time limit for individual comment to the Board is three minutes. Please state your name before you begin speaking. If your time expires, you may leave any question along with your name, address, and phone number with the county manager. Board members are not expected to comment on matters during public comment. This is your time to speak to us. The Board reserves the right to deny public address on any subject previously presented to the Board during the same meeting. Please note, a group can elect one person to speak for 10 minutes if eight people in attendance really wish their right to speak on the issue. We currently have two people signed up for public comment. You'll come to the podium, and you'll have three minutes, and we'll start with Allison in guard.
Good evening, and thank you all for your service to our community. I'm here representing our community, parents, caregivers, families, taxpayers, with an eye toward plans for funding our school system, investing in our school systems going forward. So, we're keeping, you know, very close watch on this issue this season, especially given what we've all been through through the last five years and more. We want to see investment in our schools, children, teachers, the whole gamut. So, we support you in your decisions and hope that we'll be open to discussion over this season of budgeting and funding decisions. Thank you.
Our second speaker is Christina Mason.
Hi, I'm Christina Mason. I'm a resident in West Asheville, and I have a son in Asheville City Public Schools at Isaac Dixon Elementary. I'm basically here for the same reason, to tell you that, as parents, we want our schools to be fully funded, and while we understand that the hurricane has a lot of consequences and certainly has impacted the budget for the county, that's not going to be a good enough excuse for underfunding our schools. And so, we're going to ask you to really dig deep, get your people to work on this, to come up with either creative solutions or solutions that have already been proposed that maybe you haven't pursued, making some changes to the way property tax is assessed, for example. Simply saying that there's not enough to go around is not going to be good enough anymore. And our county is not going to be a place where people want to raise their families and have their kids be educated if we are going to ask them to get by on skeleton budgets. And at this point, they're not even skeleton budgets. They're like a pile of bones if you don't give them enough money to keep going. I mean, right now, there are four custodians, I've heard, working across all of our elementary schools, and they had to lay off several. We're looking at layoffs of a lot of staff. I know the Asheville City Schools has really tried to buffer kids from the impact by cutting positions that were not necessarily student-facing first, but they're not going to have that luxury going forward. And, you know, I have a second grader, he already doesn't have a dedicated IA in his classroom, an instructional assistant, whereas in the past, he would have had one, but now his floats between the classrooms. And he might be lucky next year in third grade to get one at all. So, I just hope that you keep in mind that, you know, there are people that are going to be impacted, and I don't think it's necessarily the right approach to say, "Well, we have this pot, and it needs to be split evenly between sheriff's office and housing and schools and everything else." Maybe it's time to take a harder look at those priorities and decide, you know, where you're not going to cut anymore. Thank you.
Are there any members who did not sign up who would wish to speak at this moment? Yes, please come to the podium and state your name, and you'll have three minutes.
Yes, my name is Daniel Shetley. I'm a lifelong resident of Buncombe County and currently residing in West Asheville for the past 13 years. I too am here about the concern for our kids. This has been ongoing, again, for five years since COVID. We have had wildfires, we have had floods. My child has, I have a second grader and a seventh grader. I have a seventh grader who is a product of Monford North Star being shuttered last year because of funding issues. I am gravely concerned over the state of our kids and the system that they are having to operate in for education. Our teachers are stressed out, our teachers are pushed to the max, and the funding that is there is not adequate already, and with any cuts that is coming, it's going to be detrimental to our kids. If you look at our tax bases of what we're looking at, we have a lot of tourist revenue that is not coming in right now. We know there's a lot of tax money that is not coming into the county, but that cannot be an excuse for doing nothing for our children. And I just ask you to take a hard look at these numbers and to figure out ways to make this work for our kids. There are a lot of kids out there that are really suffering, and they are behind already. We have, I was talking with my volunteer as much as I can in my second grade's classroom because of the lack of support that's in there. And there's children in there that can, there's some children in there that have a hard time reading, and that's just not acceptable for a second grader. I mean, this is something that we need to be able to wrap our arms around them as a community and show them that we love them and care about them, and we're going to do what needs to be done to make these kids successful. Thank you.
Are there any other members who wish to speak at this time? All right, thank you all. We have several presentations this evening. We have our National Public Health Week proclamation. Ellis Matheson, our Public Health Director, is here to accept the proclamation, who will be read by Commissioner Jennifer Horton. And I think Ellis has a lot of folks joining her. Thank you.
County of Buncombe County, no, County of Buncombe proclamation, National Health Week, April 7th through the 13th, 2025. Whereas, on this 30th year of celebrating National Public Health Week, the theme is "It Starts Here," highlighting the importance of making a difference in our home, community, and state. In the past 30 years, significant strides have been made in public health, such as deaths due to HIV and AIDS in the U.S., which peaked in 1994, have dropped significantly with antiviral therapy, ensuring most people with HIV can live normal lifespans. And prevention tools like PrEP significantly reduce transmission and smoking rates, which were as high as 25.5% among U.S. adults in 1994, have fallen to 11.4% due to comprehensive smoke-free policies, public awareness campaigns, and taxation of tobacco products. And childhood mortality, which was 13.8 deaths per 1,000 live births in 1994, now has fallen to 5.4 deaths per 1,000 live births due to vaccines, better healthcare access, and nutrition. And mental health awareness and treatment, with 40% of people with mental health conditions being untreated in 1994, has progressed with increased awareness, laws, and integration into primary care, have expanded access to mental health services and reduced treatment gaps, and lead poisoning, with 4.4% of U.S. children having elevated blood levels in 1994 has fallen to less than 0.5% due to policies banning leaded gas and reducing lead in paint, pipes, and water systems. And health impacts of climate change, such as rising heat-related deaths, were underrecognized in 1994, but now mitigated by actions such as public health campaigns, local adaption plans, including cooling centers and other preparedness plans, to protect the public from extreme weather, wildfires, and other regional threats, and global fireworks, I'm sorry. We're going to make it through it. Framework, where was I? I'm sorry. Pandemic preparedness, which was in its infancy in 1994, has grown especially after the COVID-19 pandemic, spurring significant advancements in mRNA technology, global vaccine deployment, and increased investments in infrastructure, stockpiles, and global surveillance. Whereas, public health professionals help communities prevent, prepare, withstand, and recover from the impact of full range of health threats, ranging from infectious disease outbreaks to natural disaster preparedness. And whereas, efforts of support, public health, and prevention of disease and injury can continue to transform a health system focused on treating illness into a health system focused on preventing disease and injury and promoting wellness. Now therefore, the Buncombe County Board of Commissioners hereby proclaim April 7th through 13th, 2025, as National Public Health Week in Buncombe County, and encourage the people of Buncombe County to observe this week by helping our families, friends, neighbors, coworkers, and leaders to recognize the contribution of public health. This first day of April, 2025, signed by Chair Amanda Edwards, Buncombe County Board of Commissioners. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Horton. On behalf of myself and the staff of our Buncombe County Public Health Division, we really sincerely want to thank you for your proclamation recognizing National Public Health Week. Your support really highlights the vital role public health plays in our community, and we truly appreciate your commitment to the well-being of our residents and of our staff, who I have many with me here today. The dedication and the support of the Board of Commissioners and the public not only highlights the importance of public health initiatives, but also it inspires us to continue our efforts in promoting health and well-being for all residents. So, together, we really can continue building a healthier, stronger community for all. So, thank you for your leadership and your dedication to public health.
Thank you all. I'll echo Ellis's last words to us, back to each of you in public health. Thank you for your commitment and dedication to Buncombe County and public health. We are incredibly grateful. All right, we have one more proclamation this evening. Rebecca Smith and several Buncombe County social workers are joining her as well, as well as Mountain Child Advocacy Center, to accept the proclamation for Child Abuse Prevention Month, read by Vice Chair Moore.
All right, County of Buncombe proclamation, Child Abuse Prevention Month. Whereas, children are our state's most vulnerable members, as well as our state's most valuable resource, helping to shape the future of North Carolina. Whereas, positive childhood experiences, PCES, like loving caregivers and safe, stable, and nurturing relationships, can help mitigate trauma and the negative impacts of adverse childhood experiences, ACEs, to promote the social, emotional, and developmental well-being of children. And whereas, childhood trauma can have long-term psychological, emotional, and physical effects throughout an individual's lifetime and impact future generations of their family. Whereas, childhood trauma, including abuse and neglect, is a serious problem affecting every community, and finding solutions requires input and action from everyone. Whereas, children who live in families with access to concrete, economic, and social supports are less likely to experience abuse and neglect. Whereas, nurturing positive childhoods and preventing child maltreatment is possible because of the partnerships created between families, prevention advocates, child welfare professionals, education, health, community, and faith-based organizations, businesses, law enforcement agencies, local, state, and national governments. And whereas, we acknowledge that to solve the public health issue of abuse and neglect, we must work together to change hearts and mindsets through storytelling and sharing, center the needs of families, break down bias and barriers, and inspire action from expected and unexpected partners. Whereas, we are committed to advancing equitable, responsive, and effective systems that ensure all children and families are healthy and thriving. Whereas, we recognize the need to prioritize kids and invest in more prevention initiatives like home visiting and family strengthening policies, economic support, and community-based child abuse prevention programs at the national, state, and local levels. And whereas, the 2025 theme for child abuse prevention is "Powered by Hope, Strengthened by Prevention." And now therefore, the Buncombe County Board of Commissioners hereby proclaim April 2025 as Child Abuse Prevention Month in Buncombe County, and urge all citizens to recognize this month by building a narrative of hope for children and families through collaboration and the creation of an ecosystem of primary prevention that does not currently exist in this country. This the first day of April 2025. Amanda Edwards, Chair of the Buncombe County Board of Commissioners.
Yes, thank you so much. I want to express gratitude to the staff who showed up here today and to all of our staff who work in our Child Protective Services Department. The reality is, is that prevention is the job of all community members. Unfortunately, when cases get to come to our attention in Child Protective Services, it's a little bit too late. And so, this opportunity to bring this proclamation forward is really appreciated, to shed light on the need for all community members to take a look at what you can do to help prevent child abuse in our community. Child abuse can be prevented through improvements to access to social determinants of health, can be improved through access to things like after-school programs and community-wide programs, and we are lucky enough to work in Buncombe County where we have a wide array of resources and services available for our children and families. And so, just appreciate all of you helping us to shed light and bring attention to Child Abuse Prevention Month, and thank you so much for the proclamation.
If it's okay, can we bring Carla up just to say a couple of words for Mountain Child?
Absolutely. Thanks, Rebecca.
Well, thank you so much for including us this month and declaring it Child Abuse Prevention Month. Our motto is "Hope, Help, and Healing," and the hope of that is prevention. And it takes our entire community coming together to recognize that we can make a difference in children's lives. So, thank you for acknowledging that and for your service.
Thank you. We appreciate the work of each of you in working to keep our kids safe. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
All right, we don't have any public hearings this evening. Manager Pender, do you have a report for us? No report. All right, we will move into new business. Mason Scott, our Assistant Finance Director, is here to provide more information about selecting a bank lender and approving a resolution for equipment financing. Good evening, Mason.
Good evening. I am here to discuss what I hope, expect to be the last debt transaction of our fiscal year, so have been in front of you a few times this year on this topic, but hope to close it out today. As we have discussed in the past, we as a county are moving a significant portion of our fleet to a leasing model, but there are still some vehicle and equipment needs that are more lend themselves to purchasing due to the specialty of their function. During the planning cycle for the current fiscal year, so for fiscal '25, this body approved a set of equipment and vehicle purchases, and the expected funding source was debt. We have been working to acquire the equipment and those vehicles, and now we are at the phase of activating that funding source. So, quick overview of the equipment and vehicle needs. We have a solid waste compactor. That compactor has been ordered, it is being built specifically for Buncombe County. We expect delivery in the next couple of months. On the vehicle side, those types of vehicles include public and safety, public safety and general government vehicles. This includes ambulances, sheriff vehicles, emergency management support vehicles, and a cargo van. Of 31 vehicles, 30 have been ordered. 25 of the 30 have been delivered and are already in service or completing their outfit for their specialized role, light bars, roll cages, pushbars, et cetera. As we've worked through the equipment purchasing and loan planning, we have worked against a not-to-exceed amount of $6 million. The actual loan will be lower to align with the actual purchase amount of the vehicles. This is a simple installment financing agreement, so other than, different than the conversations we've been having earlier in the year, this is a direct bank loan. It's less complex, and it's alternative to issuing bonds. A state application is not required for a direct bank loan, but a reimbursement resolution and an approving resolution are still required as a part of this process. One of those you have already completed, I'll ask you to consider the other one today. This is a breakdown of cost by vehicle and equipment type. Included in these numbers is the solid waste compactor, of course, 10 emergency service support vehicles and their related outfit, six ambulances is included in that 10 number, 20 sheriff vehicles and related outfit, and that transport van. Looking at the timeline for this particular loan process, on March 4th, you all approved the reimbursement resolution specifically related to the vehicles. That allows us to issue debt and then reimburse ourselves for the vehicles that were purchased prior to us taking out the loan. That resolution allows us to maintain our tax-exempt status and ultimately offer a better interest rate where we, as opposed to going a taxable avenue. Between mid-February and early March, we actually released two requests for proposals of bank rates, of loan rates to banks. Originally, the solid waste compactor and vehicles were presented as two separate RFPs. We actually received a very favorable offer of 3.5% from one of our banks, which was Pinnacle for the solid waste compactor. We went back to them, negotiated, they agreed to extend that favorable rate to the vehicles, and so, we have included it all under a single rate, and we withdrew our second RFP from that process. Today, I'll be asking you to select the bank that we are recommending our staff, Pinnacle Bank, and to authorize the approving resolution, which authorizes us to enter into that loan agreement. We expect to close the loan no later than April 30th, and between now and the end of the fiscal year, we have one final vehicle to purchase, and then we expect to go through the reimbursement processes to actually get the cash on our books. And if there are no questions for me, I would ask for action to approve the resolution.
I've got to, just to clarify, I'm trying to keep things straight in my head. This is all for vehicles approved in the FY 2025 budget, right? And so, we're just kind of getting to this now because, okay. Gotcha. Thank you.
Any other questions for Mason? Not, do we have a motion to approve the resolution?
And I'll say to your point, Parker, all these, like Mason's, that have already been previously ordered, some have already here, we're now getting the money to go back and pay for those. So, we paid for it out of cash, but we had always planned to borrow that money, so now we're doing that so we can reimburse ourselves. But these are not new vehicles, these are well on the road already.
Thank you for that clarification. Do we have a motion to approve the resolution? Thank you. Commissioner Whiteside, second, by Moore. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any a post? All right, resolution is approved. Thank you, Mason. All right, our next agenda item is our Hazard Mitigation Grant Agreement, local inter-agreements. It's a lot to say, and Raphael Baptiste is here with more information for us.
It's definitely a mouthful. I go through that several times today.
A little tongue-twisted there.
Good evening, Commissioners, good to see you all again today, here to talk about inter-local agreements for HMGP, the Hazard Mitigation Grant Program. Overview, we've talked with you all a couple of times by HMGP, but just as a reminder for everyone in the audience, it's a federal program administered by North Carolina Emergency Management that's really aimed at reducing hazards and risks from disasters, and that includes using the acquisition of repeatedly damaged residential and commercial properties after disasters. It's a partnership between North Carolina and Mercy Management in Buncombe County. It's a safe-centric program. So, what they're doing is, people apply for the program, the state then acquires that property, demolishes the property, clears the property, hands over the deed, normally to Buncombe County, which maintains that property and ensures there's no further development, reducing the risk of future flooding and different events from disasters. But several of these properties are located within our municipal partners, so they're located within the city of Asheville, the town of Weaverville, and the town of Black Mountain. Again, the program's between us and the state of North Carolina, so we have asked municipalities to approve, and we're asking you today to approve inter-local agreements that would allow us to take a property that is within one of those municipal communities, and instead of that property and that deed and that responsibility coming to the county, that property would actually be transferred from the state over to either the city of Asheville, the town of Black Mountain, or the town of Weaverville. So, if municipality does decline to accept an acquisition, the county does retain the right to acquire said property. As part of note, these agreements create no long-term or financial obligation between the county or the municipalities. the county or the municipalities. Black Mountain approved the inter-local agreement on March 10th. Weaverville approved theirs on March 24th, and the city of Asheville approved theirs on March 25th. So, the requested board action today is that you authorize, approve the resolution authorizing Buncombe County enter these inter-local agreements with the city of Asheville, town of Black Mountain, and the town of Weaverville. And happy to answer any questions.
And is there a particular reason why the town of Woodfin is not proceeding in this way?
There are no applicants currently within the town of Woodfin, and we don't anticipate any. We also don't anticipate any in the town of Montree. But if that were to change, we'd come back to you all for further action.
And if a property is within the city of Asheville, for example, and the city does not want to obtain that property, the county then has the ability, the county says, "No, it's a property we're not interested in taking on," then the application is denied. Is that the process? Okay. Thank you.
Are there any other questions for Raphael? All right, there being none, do we have a motion to approve the resolution?
No motion.
Thank you, Commissioner Wells, seconded by Commissioner Sloan. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, resolution passes. Thank you, Raphael. All right, our third item this evening is our, the resolution to expand our Affordable Housing Subcommittee membership, and Jonathan Jones is joining us.
Good afternoon, commissioners. Jonathan Jones with the Community Development Division. The item that we have for you is the expansion of the Affordable Housing Committee. The Affordable Housing Committee, as you recall, was formed in February of 2019 with the purpose of engaging community partners, soliciting public input, and making housing affordability policy and funding recommendations. On March 4th, the committee recommended expanding its membership to include three commissioners as well as two residents. So, the action this evening would be a request to approve a resolution expanding the Affordable Housing Committee to include five members, three of which would be commissioners and two would be residents. If approved, the application for resident membership would go out tomorrow, and the Affordable Housing Committee would begin, or can actually continue reviewing its bylaws and program guidelines to ensure consistency with its charter. Any questions?
Are there any questions? All right, this is something we've been talking about and working on for a while now, and so I think the, speaking on behalf of all the members of the Subcommittee, we're excited to bring this forward this evening to expand this to two members of our community and to create a true Subcommittee of Affordable Housing, and appreciate the support. Are there questions for Jonathan or us? All right, if not, do we have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve the new membership guidelines.
Second.
Commissioner Sloan, seconded by Commissioner Ball. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion passes. Thank you all. Jonathan, we're going to keep you right there to discuss approval of Helene-related amendments to the Affordable Housing Services Program.
I've been waiting. So, the amendments to the Affordable Housing Service Program are to address, create some flexibilities for home, for the emergency home repair program to assist households whose homes were damaged by Hurricane Helene. The first consideration would be to increase the current maximum assistance amount from $25,000 per household to $50,000. And then, the second component of that would be to consider the structure of that assistance. The Affordable Housing Committee's recommendation in response to a request from community partners was to make that assistance a grant or no forgivable loan required. The other option would be to consider a different threshold and corresponding lien requirements. So, staff have outlined a possible structure for that. On the screen, there's a column on the left with the existing Affordable Housing Service Program Guidelines for Emergency Repairs, showing the maximum assistance at $25,000. The lien threshold is $15,000, so if the assistance exceeds that, there would be a lien placed on the home. That lien would be forgiven, $15,000 after the first year, and then $5,000 each year after that, making that forgiveness period about three years. With an adjustment to the program to increase the maximum assistance amount to $50,000, that lien threshold could remain at $15,000, and then the forgiveness schedule would be something to the effect of $30,000 in the first year, followed by $10,000 in the following two years, matching the loan forgiveness of the current program. And again, staff would work with the programs that have been funded to ensure that there aren't duplication of benefits, that there aren't other sources of support, insurance, nonprofit, state, local, federal resources that would otherwise be available and ensure that the homes assisted were actually damaged by Helene. This wouldn't replace the current policy, but would be in addition to the current policy to assist those households specifically. Any questions?
Jonathan, thank you for bringing back some changes based on the conversation that we had at our briefing meeting two weeks ago. I think you captured it very well, and I saw Vice Chair Moore, I think he has a question.
Just a brief one, and this could be for you, Kurt, or some combination. If we found ourselves in a situation that someone gets two-year, two-and-a-half, they've got the lien, they've made progress on that, is there any specific point of contact for what that person would do if they found themselves needing to sell their home due to economic straits, things come up over the years that people probably aren't predicting? Are you all able to resource some staff member to help alleviate that concern when people try to navigate the realities of life and selling a home?
So, with these programs, we are actually funding community partners who are engaging with those households, so we would work with, we would work through them to determine what that household situation is, and if we needed to bring something back to the Affordable Housing Committee or the board, I think we could use that as, use that existing relationship.
And we would work with them in terms of closing and removing the lien on their property, assuming that we are able to reach a resolution and the repayment and everything.
Perfect. Thank you.
Are there any other questions? There being none, do we have a motion? I'm going to read it. "To approve amendment to Buncombe County's AHSP Emergency Repair Program for Assistance to Households with Helene-related repair needs as follows: To increase the maximum assistance to $50,000 where costs exceed sources of support, and to establish a lien requirement where the repair is funded at or above $15,000, which will reduce by $30,000 in year one, $10,000 in year two, and $10,000 in year three."
Still moved.
Thank you. Do we have a second? Thank you. Moore and Horton, second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Thank you all, and thank you, Jonathan. We do have several board appointments this evening for the Mountain Community Capital Fund Operating Committee. We have three reappointments, Mason Scott, Dee Williams, and Tim Love, and I do need to make a note that Tim, our Assistant County Manager, has served on this committee since 2018 and has met term limit requirements. Tim currently serves as Chair of the Committee, and it has been recommended that it will be beneficial to the continuity of the committee for Tim to continue serving in this capacity through the end of the calendar year, and in doing so, will allow the Mountain Community Capital Fund to restart and stabilize post-Helene.
I feel like that's a long way of saying, "Tim, you can't quit."
Do we have a motion to approve the reappointments as presented?
Still moved.
Is that you, Drew? Commissioner Ball, and seconded by Commissioner Horton. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, Mason and Tim, you're with us. Thank you for your continued service, and to Dee Williams as well. Board announcements, are there any updates from commissioners on boards or committees that you serve on?
I can, I'll share an update. So, I attended our North Carolina Association County Commissioners, our Environmental Steering Committee, last week, and Andy Miller, Deputy Secretary for Infrastructure and Environmental Assistance, was one of the presenters, and he spoke about some funding programs, including a local assistance for stormwater infrastructure investments, as well as a $22 million for clean water, which is a state revolving fund, which is to repair and replace septics. And he said that that is actually based on the county pilot program that we did, so there'll be more information coming with that. And then, Michael Scott, who's the Director of the Division of Waste Management, provided some updates on the PFAS update, and there's some state funds to sample private wells. And also, he provided an update and said there's a 2024-34 Solid Waste Management Materials Plan, or Materials Management Plan, and they're looking at what can be pulled out of the waste stream and repurposed, and they're also conducting waste audits. And I also want to call out our staff, who have already been doing that work here locally as well. So, that was, that was good to hear. And then, just a little update, I serve on the Land of Sky Regional Council, and I'm just always really proud of the impactful work that they do, and I wanted to just share a few, few of the highlights of what they did during this, while they pivoted, of course, with Helene. And so, their, the area agency on aging staff, they support our older population, working in long-term care facilities in the aftermath and delivering critical food and supplies. The, for public assistance, they had support and provided critical capacity to local governments to their response, because they work with so many of our municipalities in our four county region. And also, they did a lot of work around communications and connectivity assistance during the response and recovery with Starlinks devices, helping businesses, and people also apply for FEMA and individual assistance, and supporting those in recovery and the aftermath. And also, I think two large workforce fairs in Asheville and Henderson early November two that attracted 1,300 job seekers who had lost jobs to Helene. And so, I just wanted to highlight that really important work they do, and also, they have about 66% of their funding comes from federal grants, so we are closely monitoring that as well, because it's really important for them to be able to continue to do this important work for our community.
Thank you so much, Commissioner Wells. Appreciate that update. Do any other commissioners have updates for us?
I have a few.
Yes, Commissioner Horton.
So, for the Health and Human Services Board, Lucy Lawrence, Jackie Hallam, and Yvette Jive officially retired after eight years of dedicated service on the Human, Health and Human Services Board. New leadership is Dr. Dan Frye with ABCCM, and as the Chair of the Board, and Jennifer Horton, myself, as the appointed Vice Chair. The Continuum of Care Board updates, point of time count was completed. It can be accessed online on their website. Community members and partners are encouraged to share the data widely. The first-ever Continuum of Care Strategic Plan will be shared with the Board for feedback in April, and should be scheduled to be adopted in May. And applications are open for their Emergency Shelter Development Work Group. Also, we have some vacancies on the COC Board, Business Community Representative, a Faith Community Representative, a Community Member Representative, and Local Non-Governmental Funders Representative. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Horton. Should folks who fit those categories, how do they apply?
The COC website.
Great. Thank you. Thank you so much, and thank you for stepping up to serve as Vice Chair on the HHS Board. Anyone else? All right, yes.
I just want to give a quick, excuse me, just a quick update. I was, excuse me, thank you. I was able to attend a trip to DC last week to advocate on behalf of recovery. It was part of the Western North Carolina Recovery and Resilience Partnership, and that was last Tuesday to last Thursday. And it's just with a great sense of appreciation and collaboration that I want to thank this commission for allowing me to go up and represent the county. We had representatives from Asheville, Avery County, Banner Elk, Black Mountain, Canton, Carolina Land and Lakes Organization, Chimney Rock, Haywood County, Lake Lor, Madison County, and Marshall, and it was a jam-packed week. We met with both our U.S. Senators, three members of Congress, had a meeting at FEMA Headquarters, and with two members of, we had a meeting at the White House with two members of their Intergovernmental Affairs Team, and we had a lot of questions. We didn't get all the answers, but we made a lot of movement. We consistently heard that DC is a town where the squeaky wheel gets the grease, and we did a lot of squeaking. So, I think it, it shows strength to be shoulder-to-shoulder with affected communities. I appreciate Chairman Edwards, Chairman Edwards' leadership, the ability to find the opportunity and pass that along. I thank you for that, and for everybody for the chance to be up there. I look forward to briefing you more on how things went.
Thank you, Commissioner Ball. We appreciate you representing us so well, and for that effort through a true nonpartisan effort amongst the represented, the affected communities. Thank you for that. Manager Pender and I were invited to join Yancey and Mitchell County Managers and their County Commission Chairs, as well as the Town Manager and Mayor of Burnsville for dinner with Governor Stein on Thursday evening, and so it was a good opportunity for us to sit shoulder-to-shoulder with the governor and discuss some of the ongoing needs that we still have in our region, and have him take those back to Raleigh for us. So, we were grateful for that invitation and to be able to join the governor. Lots of good work going on. Grateful to be up here with each of you, doing that good work. We do have a few announcements before we adjourn. The Board will meet on April 8th to conduct Board and Commission interviews. The April 15th briefing and regular meetings have been canceled. The next briefing and regular meeting will be held on May 6th, starting at 3:00 PM, and we do not have a need for a closed session this evening, do we, Mr. Uller? Great. With that, do we have a motion to adjourn? Thank you. Second.
Second.
Second, Moore. All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.